The meeting to order, the invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Brian Hammons, would you please stand?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Lord, we pray that you will be with all of those who are in the path of Hurricane Milton and those still recovering from Hurricane Helene. Lord, we pray that you will just be with them through the next several days and weeks as they recover and rebuild. Lord, we pray that you will give them peace and comfort in this time. Lord, we pray that you will be with us in these council chambers as we take up the business of the citizens of Bossier City. Lord, that you will give each of us guidance in what's the right thing to do and that you will be with us as we conduct this business. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call.
Mr. Montgomery, absent. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammonds?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free? Absent. Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and addresses for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tem barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City Council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I asked and I thank you for the opportunity. I wanted to address an issue that, as to the time of this meeting, the meeting was scheduled for 3:35. I know that is an unusual time. Some of you know why that is, some of you don't, but I'd like to address that because there were some questions about that. All of the items that are on today's agenda, the item involving the mayor's appointee in the Department of Parks and Rec and the resolution calling for the charter commission's recommendations to be on the December 7th ballot, these are all exactly the same as the items that were presented on Tuesday's council meeting. The Parks and Rec issue was on the agenda, the resolution item was not. It was, there was a request to add it and that request was not unanimous. But everything is exactly the same as it was on Tuesday's meeting. The only exception is the date on the resolution itself, because it has to go to the bond commission, the date on the documents and there's, we had copies of these available. There's a few up here if anybody doesn't have one and then there's a few redlined versions of the charter. But in this resolution document, it has to have the date that it's adopted. And in the version that we had for Tuesday, had it been adopted Tuesday, that was October the 8th. And so it had in the date of October the 8th. If it's adopted today, it will be adopted October the 10th. Working with outside counsel on this, I made the revision for today's meeting and I had the wrong date in some areas. I put it as October 9th rather than the 10th yesterday. We didn't catch that until after this version had been put out for the 3 o'clock meeting. And so, and by the time we could get it re-noticed timely, it had to be 3:35. So, everything was done, first off, the only thing that's different from Tuesday is it has October the 10th date, not October the 8th. So, there's not any effort to, you know, change anything on anybody. But I apologize for the change in the time. I take full responsibility for that. I appreciate everybody indulging and starting a little bit later despite what Mr. Jacobs says all the time. I'm not perfect. I'm just, I try to, I try to be, but sorry for the change in the time, but that's why it was.
Thank you, Richard. All right, we need a motion to approve today's agenda.
Mr. President, if I could, before we approve the agenda?
Yes, sir.
I would ask that we continue item number two for two weeks.
Counsel, we need, we gotta get a second on that. Motion fails due to a lack of second.
We still need a motion to approve the agenda.
Say again, fellas?
We still need a motion to approve the agenda, today's agenda, as per.
Counsel, we need a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve today's agenda.
I second it. I second it. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Yes, sir.
Huh? Oh, I'm sorry.
Four comments.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Alice Boyer, 5041 Highway 80, Port, Louisiana. I'm not going to bring up the sensitive topics today. Done a lot of reflecting about the way things go in here. And I ended up putting my business hat back on. Some of it was influenced partially by my meeting with Sheriff Whittington last year. There were some points that we discussed about the handling of COVID and there were a number, a number of other subjects discussed. And putting in, back on my business hat, I kind of just want to give you a realm of how and why and my upbringing and my background because my father had the largest independently-owned oilfield service company down in Lafayette with competitors of Schlumberger and Halliburton and did business internationally until the crash in the 80s. But that business is still operating today and it gave me a lot of insight into business. And I, I think that you could probably end up eliminating a lot of your dissenters if you would, because I, I know I brought up the actual organizational chart that's in the financial statement at some point. And it has the citizens at the top, but you know, with all of the accounting background I've gotten so many different areas, I started looking at it a little bit differently. It didn't really look like an organizational chart to me anymore. It more, it looked more like a revenue and expenditure flowchart with the citizens being at the top as the asset base for the revenue. And I, and because of something discussed in the meeting with the sheriff, I'm just wondering that a lot of these people would probably have a better understanding if they realized that y'all actually were basically a board of directors, which, for a corporation and that y'all, y'all endured the listening of it. I witnessed it happening at the school board with all of the COVID handling. You listened, you know, and endure it all, but the thing is you're not obligate, you show no sense of obligation to follow the charter equally. How's that? And the only thing that explains it to me in my business mind that I had to put back on after 12 years of getting out of corporate America is that y'all are a corporation and you're a board of directors and which explains why y'all have to maintain the status quo of what has been planned for decades and to make it go through fruition. It also explains y'all's laudable, if I look at it as a corporate entity, what y'all delegate, excuse me, delegated to the commission, they did do a great job for y'all, you know? They, they performed as y'all wanted. And I'm just thinking that if, 1871, gentlemen, and that was the discussion that I had with the sheriff last year, 1871, I think explains a lot of our structures that we have in government.
Thank you, Ms. Boyer.
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I do want to comment about the agenda. I believe this resolution is putting the cart before the horse. The charter is like a contract with the people. It's like your constitution and you must follow it. It does not absolve you, that, for instance, in the charter, it says that you shall submit the results of the charter commission to, to meet the guidelines. However, it doesn't absolve you of the fact that you have to follow section 3.20 of your own city charter. Are you going to violate your charter, section 3.20, actions requiring an ordinance? My understanding is the meeting to pass the ordinance is on Tuesday. The meeting for the, for the bond commission is on Monday. So, how do you submit a resolution to the bond commission before the ordinance? And I'll read it to you. In your charter, section 320, "In addition to other acts requiring, required by law or by specific provision of this charter to be done by ordinance," and this is the listing, "Q. Propose amendments to this charter." Now, I know one of the councilmen to my left has considered running for mayor against our current city mayor. One of the arguments that I would make, Mayor Chandler, is that you follow your charter. Other people on this council have not been following the city charter. They're willing to fight the people. So, the bond commission is on Monday. We will go to the bond commission. They don't determine legal action, but we will propose to them that you did not follow your charter and we will make a lot of noise about this. If you vote for this resolution, you're voting to violate your charter. It's not, it's not a matter of whether the charter commission did its job well, but those points could be argued. Did they follow open meeting laws? Not always. Did they respond appropriately to public information requests for their phone records where they may have been coordinated during meetings with other people? No, they didn't. It's arguable whether the ordinance establishing the charter commission was even legal. I believe there are too many questions about this to just violate the charter one more time. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this. I would vote no as a minimum. Let it be continued. I think your recommendation to continue this, Mr. Hammonds, was absolutely perfect. There are some other arguments I'll make later on, but thank you for the opportunity to come in.
West Marion, Sobo Live, 211, Shadow Ridge Drive, Bossier City. Good afternoon, council members. Thank you for calling this very special meeting. I'd like to spend the next three minutes requesting we add an item to today's agenda. New business number three, discussion on the unconstitutional actions of the Bossier City Council on October 8th, 2024. This past Tuesday, Alice Boyer was forcibly removed from this chamber by the Bossier City Marshals under the orders of you, Council President Don Williams. Her crime, daring to ask why Councilman Darby signed a letter urging President Biden to consider welcoming refugees to Bossier City. Mr. Williams, your outrageous actions were not just shameful, they were the actions of a tyrant, silencing dissent and stifling free speech in a manner that would make any communist dictator proud. You violated a fundamental principle of this country, the right to free speech, the right to criticize our government without fear of retribution. The United States Supreme Court has long affirmed that public discourse must be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, even when it is uncomfortable or critical. But instead of respecting these values, you wielded your authority like a hammer, smashing the very freedoms you were sworn to protect. The First Amendment is not just a piece of paper, it is a bedrock of our democracy. And the U.S. Supreme Court made it clear in New York Times v. Sullivan, "There is a profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials." Ms. Boyer's comments were not disruptive, they were the exercise of her right to question and hold her elected officials accountable. Yet you, Mr. President, decided to silence that voice, not because it was disruptive, but because it was critical. In doing so, you crossed a line that courts have repeatedly drawn. In ICE and v. Madison School District, the Sixth Circuit invalidated attempts to silence abusive, personally-directed, and antagonistic comments, recognizing that such restrictions often mask viewpoint discrimination. And as the Supreme Court said recently in Texas v. Johnson, "If there is a bedrock principle underlying the First Amendment, it is that the government may not prohibit the expression of an idea simply because they find it offensive or disagreeable." Mr. President, you are not alone to blame. Your accalcitrant majority who sat in silence in the face of this blatant abuse of power are nothing short of cowardly. They had the opportunity to stand up for what is right, to intervene, and to remind you, Mr. President, this chamber belongs to the people, but instead they chose to avert their eyes and let this travesty continue. Today, I am demanding this council add an agenda item to discuss the unconstitutional actions that took place under your watch on Tuesday. You owe the city an explanation and you owe Alice Boyer an apology. We must openly acknowledge this disgraceful incident and demand accountability from those responsible. This discussion must lead to a clear plan, one that ensures that no citizen of Bossier City is ever again dragged out of this chamber for exercising their constitutional right. Thank you.
I expected Mr. Montgomery to be here today, so I had to try to fix my, my comments here. Cassie Rogers, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilman. Minus two of you, I see you've all finally decided to do something ethical. Congratulations. How many times this year have we gotten to see this as the citizens of Bossier City? Once. One time. This has to be the craziest, most disrespectful, absolutely checked-out-of-reality, unbelievable group of men I've ever met in my life. To top it off, you're supposed to be the leaders, the trendsetters, the go-getters of our amazing city. Instead, you've made this all about you, your desires, your wishes, your will be done, citizens be damned. I've met a lot of terrible people in my life, but four out of the six of you have to rank number one in the category of the most selfish human beings I've ever met in my life. She probably won't speak to me again after this, but let me ask you a rhetorical question. What in the world crossed your mind when making the decision to put Mary Ward's appointment to be continued to today's agenda? A meeting you all knew would draw some serious unpleasant comments. The president of the commission stated, and I quote, I'm sorry, I missed my place. Ha, dang it. A meeting you all knew would draw some serious unpleasant comments. The president of the commission stated, and I quote, "That they were put through hell." Mary deserves better than that. Mr. Montgomery had to have had this scheduled for more than a year. If he wanted to say some kind words in her favor, he should have been here. He also could have waited to address it at a later point in time. Mary Ward has dedicated her life to the women of this city, either through her coaching, her mentoring, her small business. I could go on. This is a disgrace. You see, this was supposed, this wasn't supposed to be about you. It's disgusting. Too bad, too bad he wasn't here on Tuesday and too bad he's not here today. But the reaction of the president, as confused as he is in every meeting we seem to have lately... reaction of the president, as confused as he is in every meeting we seem to have lately, you shouldn't have continued it. You shouldn't have even asked. Or at the very least, you should have notified her, the people who showed up to see her, or anyone else for that matter, that you might decide to do this. Mary Ward deserves a parade that lasts a week in this city. Through every single street, she has changed the face of the women that have grown up in this town. She's changed the hearts, the minds, every bit of it. She deserves better than this. That's not to mention the fact that Mr. Montgomery continues to say, I'm just going to finish my sentence. Whoever has the buzzer can stop. Today is a single-handed attempt. Well, it's actually going to happen, so you guys have killed democracy in Bossier City. I hope you're proud of yourselves.
Are you opposed to the agenda, ma'am? Are you opposed to the agenda as it is?
Yes.
Okay. We've already had our four that was opposed to the agenda as it is.
You've had four already?
Is that right? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll sit and I can come back.
Is anybody for this item, this agenda? Nope, got to approve the agenda.
All right, make a motion to approve the agenda somewhere.
We already did that.
Are we ready to vote?
We just got the vote.
Hmm?
We just got the vote.
Okay, everybody cast your vote. New business?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the appointment of Mary Ward as Director of Parks and Recreation to be effective upon retirement of the current director. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Any comments, counsel?
Mayor?
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
I want to tell the citizens of Bossier City that I am very proud to nominate Mary Ward to be the Director of Parks and Recreation. With this council's confirmation, Mary will be the very first female director of this department. Mary's background, work experience, and community involvement are exceptional, as she is more than qualified for this position. She has shared some of her ideas to me and my administration and to the council, her ideas to enhance the parks and recreation, and I have no doubt that Mary will take this department to another level. Mary is a leader, and she knows the importance and value of teamwork. Also, I want to say to the council, I believe she is a perfect person to lead Parks and Rec, and I want to thank the council for taking the time to meet with her last week. Today is an important for you, is an opportunity for you to make history in Bossier City, and I'm asking for your support to confirm Mary Ward as Director of Parks and Recreation.
Any comments from the audience?
I, I have something, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I've, I've known Mary her whole entire life. Our families grew up right down the street from each other. We went to high school together. Her brothers. Want to apologize to you. This city is usually not an embarrassment the way that it is right now. The business that we conduct in here is not usually like this. Usually what we're doing is trying to do for the betterment of this city. So I still hope you want to come to work for the city, because it's not always like this, but we thank you. I think you're going to do fantastic things. We look forward to you doing fantastic things for the city, and we really, we really appreciate you coming back again today.
Mr. Mayor, the director, have you decided the starting salary?
She will go as assistant, and she'll work in the director after Bohan leaves. Bohan is planning on retiring January 10th.
So the starting salary?
Starting salary is-
What you get to, to the director?
It's going to be the same, sir.
Okay. So I make the recommendation or amend this resolution to authorize the appointment of Mary Ward as the Director of Parks and Recreation, following the retirement of current Parks and Recreation Director for three months' trial basis, subject to review and approval by the council, and that the salary upon appointment would be the market minimum plus 5% according to the recent salary study. That's my motion to amend this resolution.
I'll second that.
Do we have discussion on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, why, I, I don't understand why us as a council are going to review somebody after three months that does not work for us. She works for the mayor. I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't understand this at all, that we're, we're going to come back in and review somebody that we do not work with on a day-to-day basis. It, that, that just seems completely irrelevant, that, that we're going to, that, that would even be discussed for us to do that. All we, I mean, you know, yeah, we approved the budget and everything like that, but for us to review her performance, I, I don't agree with that at all.
Well, it's not, it's not to review her performance.
That's what you just said.
No, I didn't say performance. Yes, your words, not mine's. The, the, the appointment of a director has to come before the council. When she moves to that position, it's coming before the council anyway. So my thought is the, the possibility of training, which she already said that's what you want to happen, in the position of assistant, and so she's just going to give us, or give you, or you can, she doesn't have to come, you can give us an update on, on her status at that time.
Yes, sir. I always thought that the department heads had like a six-month probation to meet, to be the value-wise what they've done in their job, which I think she's going to exceed whatever the hell you think she's going to be.
Yeah, I, I don't have a doubt that she won't. The, the transition from the assistant to the director is, is the point. The Recreation Department is the third-largest department budget-wise.
Yes, it is.
And so it's a very critical department of the city, and it's not to critique her at all. It's just a matter of getting an update on how those training days went.
I would mind updating y'all every month, or whatever you want to do, and what she's going to do, and all her improvements that she, she's going to start day one improving that place, you know, so I, I would, I would love to tell y'all every time she does something, and what she, she's bringing to Bossier City.
Yeah, I don't have a doubt that she won't do well. I, I'm, I'm thinking that, that she will. It's, it's not a matter of having reservations about that. It's just a matter of making sure that we know that she's comfortable with her position when she elevates it, and, and we got what we, we need. So that's the only reason for the, the update in three months. That's not to critique her at all, just, just to get that information.
Mayor, if you don't mind, the other thing is, he said you could, you could do that, and just, you could give us just an overview when that happens, three months, you know?
Okay, this doesn't-
No big, long thing, just-
Does this have to do with her being a female, being a woman?
Mayor, Mayor, why in heaven would you even say that?
I just, that's just a simple question.
No, no, you're not, you're not. You should know better than that. We have lots of females in, in the city administration. That's not even an issue at all.
Yes, sir, but I mean, the doubt, the doubt that she can do that, sir.
No.
You're doubting her, what you get to do.
You, you are saying that on purpose because of your own mindset, your own mentality. That doesn't even make sense to even say that. I can't believe it.
Listen, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I, I yield. Thank you. Mr. I, I got something, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the only reason that I brought that up about her, I don't remember when Mr. Rich was confirmed as department head of Public Works. Who else was you coming in directors? I don't remember Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Ray. I don't remember us asking after three months for us to have an update on what they're doing.
It's not an update. It's not an update. It's not an update. It's a review, and I said that the mayor can give us his take on her.
But then why was it just for her? Why didn't we do it on everybody?
No, we've had other people on probation before. We've had other people on probation. You haven't been here long enough to know that, but-
Well, maybe you've been here too long.
Oh, see, that's, 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 you know what? You know what? That, that may be true in your eyes, but as long as I'm here, I'm going to speak. And, and no, no matter what you say, or what you say, Mayor, I'm going to speak. And I don't care what anybody says. I'm a citizen. I have a right to say what I need to say, and I'm going to speak. You can disagree or agree. That's, that's life. Life about choices. You can choose to agree or disagree. And I'm not, I'm not going to back down because of these whistleblowing-type statements that are being made.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. David Johnson, 4,600 blocks, General Yule. Mayor, I want to thank you for standing up, supporting Mrs. Ward. I think without question, without question, if we put this to a vote with the citizens, they would unanimously give her more votes than they would several of the people up here on this council. It's enough of the disrespect for the people of this city. Mr. Hammond, thank you for speaking up. Mayor, I can't thank you enough, and we do, we are listening. We do appreciate it. This lady right here, with hands down, will be an amazing addition to Park and Recreation, period. Thank you.
I'll call the question.
Hi, counsel.
You voted for the resolution?
Huh?
You voted for the resolution?
Okay. All right, sorry. Sorry. Don't beat me up.
You'd be in good company.
Huh?
You'd be in good company.
Good, Mr. President.
Did you want to call the question and not vote now? You let him speak or what?
Yeah, we'll let, we'll let one more speak. Yeah, we, we got to let him speak.
But, Miss, if we, we, we can't make a record of the proceedings when we're getting things shouted out from the audience that are not subject to being recorded on the microphone. So could, you know, to have an accurate recording, an accurate rendition of the meeting, then we need to not shout out questions or comments from the audience, but come forward in the, you know, as the process calls for, for the rules of the city council, so that those comments or questions can be properly recorded. We don't, with all this, you know, catcalling and things going on, we can't have an orderly meeting.
Rex Moncrief, 20 to 8 Hickory Ridge Drive, Bossier City. So I agree with Mr. Jacobs. You're right, there doesn't need to be the catcalling. The problem is, this meeting is getting out of hand, and the president is not taking control of it.
The reason it's getting out of hand, Mr. Moncrief, is all the people in the audience yelling and screaming when somebody's at the microphone trying to talk.
Well, and while I'm talking and have my three minutes, which the clock is probably going to tick on, I'll appreciate it if you let me speak. So the way that this goes is, I appreciate Mr. Hammond's calling for the question, but by Robert's Rules of Order, if you actually read it, calling for the question only stops the debate among the council members, not during the public commentary period. And by the way, while I'm up here, nothing against her being nominated for the position or whatever, but you're still under the motion to continue this because Montgomery wasn't here the other day, and here he is not again. So you got to deal with that motion before you can make the motion to nominate her today. Follow Robert's Rules of Order. We won't catcall.
First of all, Mr. President.
I made the motion.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
The city does not follow Robert's Rules of Order. The city has their own rules, and they have never, to the best of my knowledge, adopted Robert's Rules of Order as a means of process.
I'm really disappointed they're not following my rules. I don't, my name, first name is Robert. My name's Robert Wright, 6307 West Ox, Bo Circle in Bossier. From what I've heard today, and I don't know Ms. Ward, but from those that know her, I've heard lots of great things about her. I agree with Mr. Hammond that if this is going to be done, for one, it should be done across the board. The next question is, if I'm so good at what I'm doing, would I accept the job under these circumstances? Really? I mean, we've heard all kinds of accolades, and I have no doubt that they're true. But if she's got all these accolades, there's a whole lot of other places she could be, probably making a whole lot more money, maybe in a bigger city somewhere, making a whole lot of money. Well, I have to tell you, under these circumstances, I wouldn't accept the job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's, one more, say your names, and we'll move on.
Tyree Venus, 1820 East Texas Street.
What's your name?
Tyree Venus.
Can you raise your microphone up?
No, I'm sorry. Tyree Venus, 1820 East Texas Street. I just, as an independent, as a man and as a black man, I just feel that some of the comments that were made by one of the council members, Mr. President, were highly uncalled for. As a black man who is at the age that that council member is at, I'm pretty sure that he went through a lot of things because of his race. He probably is going through things now because of his age, so the same way I would want a Republican or Democrat to call out a Republican or Democrat, as an independent, I'm here to call out that council member.
Point of order, I, I have no idea what this has to do with what we're talking about with Ms. Ward.
It was very disappointing for him to suggest that that-
Just, just talk about Ms. Ward and not a council member.
Oh, well, there's no way for that council member to ask for that to be amended, because that same council member just voted to approve the agenda. He had an opportunity to amend that new business item, but he chose to vote to approve the agenda. Thank you, sir.
How many was that, three?
That was four.
David Crockett, 6-
Phyllis, that was already four?
That was four. Mr. Moncrief spoke about the Robert's Rules of Order, so-
He didn't speak on the subject, and I think you've only had two other than him.
We've already had four, thank you.
No, she, no, that's not what she said.
What'd you say, Phyllis?
I said Mr. Moncrief, he spoke on Robert's Rules of Order, so with the gentleman that just left, that was three.
Okay.
Your city attorney asked somebody to speak in front of the mic if they're going to address and get rid of the catcalling, so please, Mr. President, allow some respect for the people. One of the comments that I've made repeatedly to the council is that I respect the mayor's decisions, and that's his executive authority in this, in this city. He's not the executive of this body. You're the legislative. One of the problems in Bossier City is the people on this dais try to take the power away from the mayor. The way the city charter reads, the mayor nominates, he, he does that. He appoints and you approve, and this is the meeting to approve. I'd say go ahead and approve it, whether you want to continue it because of a problem that Mr. Montgomery had, which I thought was extremely inappropriate. That's your decision. But I don't think that this needs to go on to put this family that everybody has high respect for through more and more of this. Mr. Darby will have a chance to review this meeting. Everything that was said about that, that the public is questioning, were taken out of his words. I highly support Mayor Chandler and Ms. Nottingham and the way they manage the city from an executive authority. The mayor has the right to let somebody go if he needs to. I give Tommy Chandler all, all accolades with the fact that I think he would do that if necessary. That's what your charter says. Stop pushing your will over and over again on the executive authority. I'm going to comment on that later on. The mayor should have been able to hire a CAO. You take that authority away from him without, without giving a second to somebody he nominates. This council, that's what started the embarrassment that's become open about Bossier City right now. Now, I hope that she does take the job- Now, I hope that she does take the job because we need people with new ideas in Bossier City. We need a council with new ideas in Bossier City. That's why we need term limits. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak, and I'll have some more to say about this later on, but I think the Charter Commission could have fixed these issues, but they didn't, and that's going to be one of the major, major arguments that we have to campaign against the Charter Commission, is that you didn't fix the city's problems with the Charter Commission, and there are several reasons for that. Thank you.
That was our fourth speaker, correct?
Yes, sir. That was number four.
No, no, I'm a, I'm an American. I'm a citizen. I'm a citizen of this town, and you are not legally to stop me from saying anything I want to say.
Our rules do that. But do, our rules do that.
No, I, I, what rules? You're, you're not any better than I am. Let's do it by my rules.
I, I, I'm just saying, this is the council rules, what she read.
I'm going to tell you, there's two people out of this commission that votes for me. The rest of you vote for you. That's bull. You supposed to be here working for the citizens of this city and of this state and of this country. You took an oath to do it. Damn it, do it.
Mr. Marriott, we're done, okay?
Sure. You had four opposed, Mr. Darby's. I'm actually four, so I would be the first on the other side, following your rules. Wes Marriott, Sobo Live, 211 Shattler Drive, Bossier City. I support, uh, Mr. Darby's motion. If there's one thing I appreciate, it is consistency, and this body has consistently violated the charter, and I don't want us to deviate now. If only we had handouts available for everyone here with a copy of the charter and some proposed, proposed amendments, we could all gather around Section 308 and look at the section entitled Prohibitions, and this is why I support Mr. Darby's motion. Because if he were to follow the charter foolishly, he would have read this and saw, except for the purpose of inquiries and investigations under Section 309, and for the purpose of gathering information, the City Council or its members shall deal with city employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the mayor solely through the mayor. Neither the City Council nor its members shall give orders to any employee, either publicly or privately. They also shall not dictate the appointment or removal of any city employee for whom the mayor or any of his subordinates are empowered to appoint. So, in the spirit of continuing to violate the charter, I support the consistency of Mr. Darby and his ridiculous motion. Thank you.
Hey, that's enough, that's enough. One question. We gotta get on.
One question.
Yes, sir.
If you're, if you are going to do what you said, and that is not run for office next year, then you should recuse yourself from voting on something that would affect you.
How's this going to affect me? Voting for a lady, voting for a lady, I'm going to vote yes for her. How's that going to affect me?
You should vote on, not vote on it, because if you vote on it, you're going to vote on it for that man that ain't sitting right there.
I'm only doing one vote.
Y'all, y'all vote for, y'all vote however he tells you anyway. Every damn one of you, except these two men right here. They're the only one got guts to go against him.
Thank you.
Uh, I get point of information, Mr. Jacobs. Uh, someone mentioned earlier, should we, after we vote on Mr. Darby's amendment, should there be a motion to remove our continuance for two weeks before we move to appoint her procedurally?
I don't think that's necessary. I would point out the fact that as a department head, and the charter prescribes that the mayor nominates and the city council approves, there is no process in the charter that would allow for, quote, "review" by the city council that I'm aware of. The, the department head is a non-classified employee, such as myself, Angela Williamson at Finance, Wade Rich, uh, Roshan Bach, and they are subject to termination, firing, dismissal for a good reason, a bad reason, or no reason, at the will and the sole discretion of the mayor. So, um, I believe that the charter, um, as written, would not allow a review by the city council, and the department head is always on probation, so to speak, because they're always subject to a review by the mayor.
So procedurally, we don't need to repeal?
Procedurally, I don't think so. This is a meeting. Um, it's on the agenda. The agenda was approved. It goes without saying that.
And Mr. Williams was the one who made the motion to continue it, and Mr. Williams was the one that asked for it to be placed back on the agenda for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. That, I just want to make sure it was clear.
And if I may, let me, I'd like to clarify one other thing very quickly. Uh, Mr. President, as to the issue of the confirmation of Ms. Ward, I believe the resolution that's before you today is to confirm her now. But her confirmation, she wouldn't be the director until Mr. Bohannon retires, but that there wouldn't be another time for her to come back for confirmation. I think that's correct. Is it, Mayor? That she would be confirmed now. I just want to make sure that's clear, so everybody knows that she would be confirmed. She wouldn't be in the position right now with the salary. And by the way, I think the only salaries that the city council can set are their own by ordinance or the mayor's by ordinance, but everything else is, is under the Budget Act, and I don't think there's authority to set individual salaries, but I think that she'd be confirmed now. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah. Mr. Darby, um, do you want to extend that, or do you want us to vote on it?
My resolution is to, to do what I've already spoken, and I'm not going to deviate from that. Everyone has a chance to vote.
So basically, it's the market minimum, plus 5%.
That's my motion.
Counsel, any questions on that? All right. Cast your vote.
What, what, what are we?
This was the Mr. Darby made, Mr. Darby's amendment. Yes, it was.
It was seconded by Mr. Williams.
All right, counsel. Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Oh, yeah, that's right. It's, it's got to be four votes. Sorry. It, it does have to be four votes, so the motion fails. So now it's back to the original motion, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the appointment of Mary Ward as Director of Parks and Recreation to be effective upon retirement of the current director. First and final reading, we have a motion by Brian Hammond and a second by Vince Maggio.
Counsel, any comments?
We, we've done that already.
You did the public comments only on the Mr. Darby's motion.
David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. Ms. Ward, I have not met you, and I've heard so many wonderful things about you before today, and today, this is not the way a city should be run. I fully appreciate you running. We need, and, and most of the comments that I have, in fact, all the comments that I've ever made about Bossier City has not been directed at the staff. We have a beautiful staff. They're all fun to work with. They all help us when we call them. Bossier City is a great city for everybody to work at. I absolutely look for, I'm, yes, sir.
Just speak to the.
Okay. Well, my comments are to her. Okay, I get three minutes. But my comment is that when we come up here, what we want to see with Bossier City is we're happy that Mayor Chandler has selected somebody to go before this body. She will be able to serve very respectfully, and the people will love her. What we're trying to do is say that for the last three years, because Bossier City went through change, we've got a new mayor. We want now Mayor Chandler to exercise all his rights as mayor and for the council to get out of the mayor's business. That's what the people are wanting. Now, we're, we're going to get, in the next election cycle, there is no doubt in my mind that there's going to be major, major change in Bossier City. And frankly, I'm embarrassed for some of the people that are sitting in front of me who have expressed that they want to run for mayor. Again, I keep repeating that. How will you garner support if you continue to vote against the people? If you keep challenge the term limit petition? Mr. Maggio, you lived in this, you had a store for 100 years. I hear it over and over again. You love your city, you love your streets, you love your water, but you don't love your people. Quit voting like that. Mr. Maggio, you have hurt this city. I hope you run for mayor.
I guess I wouldn't be me if I didn't get up here and talk. Cassie Rogers, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112. I'm not, I'm so confused on how you gentlemen do not know who Mary Ward is. Do you not know who she is, Mr. Maggio, or Mr. Williams, Mr. Darby? I'm so confused. I mean, if you didn't, you live under a rock. She has been a pivotal part, including revenue to this city for a long time. She brings revenue to our city. She raises, she's raised some two of the most fantastic human beings I've ever met in my life. She's been a bearcat, a Viking, and a tiger, to which she has led basketball teams to national championships. Who in their crazy mind would not want someone like Mary Ward to be a part of this in whatever way you can get it? And I will tell you that she should probably make way more than whatever the salary she's been offering, and I understand we have a budget. But between business and athleticism and athletics and the moms and the parents and the foster kids that she's helped in this city, shame on you for having one word to say except welcome to our staff.
Ms. Mary, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I would.
Kind of crazy up here, isn't it?
No, I would like to say something. Um, it's nice to meet y'all.
Under, under these people, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, um, politics has always kind of been in my family. My family's from Bossier City, and, um, they've been here a long time. Something that I've never really wanted to get into, but I do know that I love Bossier City, very proud to be a part of Bossier City. And I, there's a couple of things that I'm very passionate about. One of those is sports, and one of those is families and kids. And the Parks and Recreation job is perfect for me to work in my passion. I've very, I've been very competitive my whole life, and so far, I've been blessed and lucky to succeed at everything I've done. So there's no doubt in my mind that if I become the Director of Parks and Rec, Bossier City's going to be number one. And I mean, that's just, that's how I operate. That's how I've done stuff my whole entire life. And all this really has done is just lit a fire. So if I ever do get the opportunity, and you do have confidence in me, one day I'm going to look at you and kind of wink and be like, yeah, this is what we did. We, as the citizens. Because that's what Parks and Recs is about. It's a service. Because you're making memories when you're going to that park with your grandparents. You're making memories when you're going to that Little League game, and all your parents are there, and your aunts are there, and your cousins are there. And that's what we need to do. We need to provide a good quality of life for the citizens of Bossier City. And I know I can do that, and I know I could get a good staff around me, and I know I can manage them, because that's what I've done all my life. So hopefully, you will vote for me, and I can prove that to you guys. And then hopefully, one day, you'll be at a park and enjoy walking around, or you'll be involved in some kind of program that we offer, because we plan on offering a lot of programs to fit every single need of the citizens. So.
You know, I've been here all my life, too. Uh, even when I was in the military, I was stationed here for 15, about 20 years. So, I, my kids, and I've got two grandkids I've had since birth, they've been through Bossier Parks all the way up to, you know, the last league you can play in, okay? But I think I know what's going to happen today, and I want to just welcome you, and I know you're going to do a great job.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Counsel, are we ready to vote now? Thank God?
Yes.
Bye, counsel. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Thank you, Lord. Been a long time.
Motion carries. A resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, to vote upon the adoption of amendments to the current city charter of the city of Bossier City, making application to the State Bond Commission and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments? Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to, before we move into any other period, I requested this special meeting today. Uh, I don't think that's any secret. I requested it because, as I stated Tuesday at the council meeting, we learned that the ad hoc meeting for the State Bond Commission is going to be Monday, this next Monday, the 14th, and that would be the very last opportunity to get any other item on the December 7th ballot. And because the window is, it may only be cracked at this point, but it's still open, uh, I, I asked on Tuesday for it to be added as a, um, on the agenda. It was not, and so then I asked for this special meeting so that it could be on an agenda and considered, and I appreciate the council, uh, agreeing to set this special meeting. But this was, one of the requests of the Charter Review Commission was that the matter be placed on the December 7th ballot or the earliest ballot that it could be, and I feel that it's important to be on the December 7th ballot for a lot of reasons, and I'd like to run through a few of those very briefly. First off, this, what's up here is a copy of the amended and restated charter that the Charter Review Commission proposed. They spent 10 months, beginning in January, a lot of meetings, a lot of meetings that frankly make this meeting look, look calm. Uh, we had a lot of these type of meetings where it was not very fun for anybody, but sometimes, you know, there's an old saying that, uh, there's two things you shouldn't watch, the, the making of sausage and the making of laws, because both are pretty ugly. But, uh, that's what our democracy's about, and as long as people are being respectful to each other, and sometimes we, you know, we press that, but it was a process that I'm proud of, and I'm proud that some of the people are here today. But they came up with recommendations, and it's the same process that was done with a Charter Commission. There was two Charter Commissions in the early 2000s. It was a Charter Commission that placed an amended and restated charter, very similar to this, on a ballot in 2004, and it failed. It was a charter that had a lot of changes in it. It was not specific amendments. It was an amended and restated charter in 2004. It failed. A second Charter Commission was, was empaneled. It made recommendations, an amended and restated charter, very similar to this, was placed on the ballot in 2005, and it passed. And it's the charter that we, that we are governed by today. It's a situation where, just like with this one, and just like in '04 and '05, this entire document, which is online on the city's website, it's been there since earlier this week. It'll be there for the duration of this process. It is all of the proposed amendments. The things that were deleted are in red. The things that are added are in green. All of the proposed amendments of 10 months of work by the Charter Commission are in this. It'll be in the Bossier Press next week. It'll be advertised three times. There will be plenty of opportunities for the, for the public to have a look at this, and then on December 7th or some future date, this public will have an opportunity to adopt this amended and restated charter, just like they did in '05, just like they did in '04. this amended and restated charter, just like they did in '05, just like they did in '04. If they adopt this amended and restated charter, then the charter will become this document with these amendments in it. That will be the charter once it's adopted. I've heard a lot of confusion. I think there's a lot of confusion, whether it's intentional or unintentional. Some of it, I think, is intentional to, to say that this is a new charter. It will be the charter. If it's adopted, it will be the charter. It will be the amended and restated charter that was adopted based on the recommendation of Charter Commission, just like in '05. It, it's not specific amendments. There are some specific amendments and we'll get into that in just a second, but it's an amended and restated charter. And so if it's adopted, it becomes a charter. It becomes the current charter. Right now, the current charter is the one that was adopted in '05. The other items that'll be on the ballot, thank you, I asked Mr. McGraw to put it up because it may be hard to see, but again, there's plenty of copies of these. I asked for a lot of copies to be made. Everyone should have one. If you don't, there's a few up here and there's other ones. But it has the exact language of the propositions. And so the charter amendment proposition number one will be to put to the voters the amended and restated charter. And the voters can either pass it or they can not pass it. That's their choice. Then the second proposition is to amend Section 3.01B, which is the part dealing with the city council. And it is asking the voters to consider amending either the charter that is in place now, the '05 charter, or this charter if it's adopted. It clearly says, shall three points, shall Section 3.01B of the existing city charter for Bossier City or the amended and restated city charter as set forth in proposition number one, if approved, be amended to read as follows. And then it has the term limit language that was recommended by the Charter Commission after the 10 months of work. It is, it is term limits on the council and then the next one is term limits on the mayor that are prospective only. There's not retroactivity in it. And it is the way that Bossier Parish School Board did it a few years ago. It's the way the legislature's done it. It's the way every other government entity that I know of that enacted term limits has done it prospectively. I don't know of a single one that's done it retroactively, but I didn't control it. I didn't, I didn't ask for it. The Charter Commission came up with this recommendation. And I can tell you, if you saw any of those meetings, there were robust discussions. Not everybody on the Charter Commission is in favor of term limits. In fact, that's one of the reasons why it's different amendments. It's because they wanted to give to the voters an amended and restated charter. And this, this amended and restated charter proposition one leaves the term limit portion, if you will, exactly the same as it is now. There's no term limit change in proposition one. In order to get term limits for the council and the mayor, the, the voters would have to approve propositions two and three. But the voters will have a choice. They can vote for a new charter or they can vote down the new charter. They can vote for term limits for the mayor and the council or they can vote against term limits for the, for the council and the mayor. The other issue that I want to make sure that I address is if this new amended and restated charter is passed in December, it, it does nothing. I said this on Tuesday. I know there are people that may disagree with this. It does nothing to impede the effort of the people that got the petition together. That is, that is pending right now at the Second Circuit Court of Appeal. If the Second Circuit agrees with the trial court and if the, if that's what the court system says, that the council has to put that on a ballot, then that will be on the ballot on March 29th. By the way, Mr. Hammond, you mentioned the other day and I forgot to tell you, there's December 7th, that's an election. There's March 29th, that's the same date as all the municipal elections. And then there's, it's in early May. I think the, May the 2nd or May the 4th or something is, is the, is the other runoff type election. Those are the only three elections that, 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 that this could be on because of the 18-month window. But the reason that it's important that this be on December 7th is because I agree with some of the premise that if this is passed after the, I'm going to call it Cassie's petition, if it's passed afterwards, then it could be argued that this amended and restated charter does away with that amendment. I don't want that to happen. There's nobody that wants that to happen. So it's better that this go on December 7th and let the voters choose to pass it or not pass it. And then if Cassie's petition is placed on a ballot in March, then the voters will be able to choose that. It doesn't amend, it amends whatever the current charter is. If the current charter is this document, Cassie's petition will amend that. If the current charter is what it is now, the '05, it will amend that. This argument that it, that it's some trickery or some, you know, shenanigans is just not true. And it's, and it's frankly, it's, it's, it's disingenuous to be out there saying that because it's just not true. And so this allows the voters to have a choice. They can, they can vote it all down if they want to. But just like with the petition, under the charter, once the Charter Commission has finished their work, and they have, and once they bring the, the items to the council, then the council's only obligation is to put those items on a ballot. And they have to put it on a ballot. I think it's better to put it on the December 7th ballot, but that's not up to me. But I also didn't want to miss the opportunity to put it on the December 7th ballot and that opportunity ends tomorrow. And so I appreciate indulging the opportunity to have it on here. I would want to address a couple of things real quick. Colonel Crockett asked about the fact that it's not an ordinance and under 3.20. The Bond Commission only requires a resolution calling for an election. And we've confirmed that with outside counsel. And I'm confident that the only thing that the Bond Commission requires to be on their agenda Monday is a, is this resolution calling for the, calling for the election. There is an ordinance and it passed first reading Tuesday and it will be up for a second reading in two weeks. The ordinance did.
But what if it doesn't pass in two weeks?
Well, then it's, it's already on a ballot.
That's the point.
But it's, the Bond Commission only is the gatekeeper of what's on the ballot. If it doesn't pass in two weeks, then I don't think the Secretary of State will put it on the ballots to be, to be, the Bond Commission is just the first threshold. The only way to get through that is to have a resolution calling for it. If you choose not to pass it, Councilman Hammond, then it won't be on the ballot in December, but you have to send it at some point. But the ordinance is already done. The only thing that you have to do before Monday is pass a resolution calling for the election. You can pass or not pass an ordinance later. And that's already had the first reading. Okay. That was all I wanted to say. I mean, I'm happy to answer questions now, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to impede anybody. I mean, I'm happy to answer questions now or after council comment or public comment.
I have a few questions, Mr. President. I'm out of the floor. Mr. Ray, so, so to be clear, the ordinance that passed and was adopted on December 5th of 2023 says, "The Charter Review Commission shall propose and submit recommended charter revisions to the city council as soon as practicable, but no later than 18 months after taking office." However, I've heard you say, and I just heard you say, that this is a brand new charter. So I'm, I'm a little confused. Is this a whole new charter? Revisions to the current charter? What's the, what, is there any difference? Is there no difference?
Well, I, I don't think I said it was a brand new charter. If, 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 you know, Bossier City's had a charter since 1978?
Four.
Four? No, that's the state constitution. I think Bossier's had one since 1978.
1976, I think.
The state passed a new constitution in 74, I think. I think Bossier's had a charter since 78, but Bossier didn't have to have a charter. There's a lot of municipalities, a lot of parishes that don't. A lot of parishes have charters. Bossier Parish does not. If we were enacting a fresh, brand-new thing, then it would be a brand-new charter.
Okay.
Now, it is, it's proposed changes, like in the ordinance you read, that they would make, they would make recommendations and they have. They made a lot of them. Once it's adopted, it will be the charter. If you want to call that a new charter, let's call it a new charter. I mean, it is the charter. It will be different in, on December the 8th, 2024 than it was in, from beginning in 2005. It will be different. It will be the current charter at that time. I would call it is a new charter. I think what's gotten confusing, and I know that lawyers in general and me in general sometimes can, can overcomplicate things, I don't mean to, but as we talked about in the whole process of the Charter Commission, there was a lot of questions about why aren't we just doing individual amendments? Well, you could. And that's what Proposition 2 and 3 are. They're, they're individual amendments. That's perfectly fine. It's also perfectly fine to propose an amended and restated charter. This Charter Commission chose to present both. And they wanted to do both because they want to give the, they wanted to give the voters the choice of term limits. And they also wanted to give the voters the choice of changes in the charter, you know, which I think are important updates. It hadn't been updated in 20 years. And I appreciate the body and the mayor, you know, advocating for Charter Commission. I think Councilman Darby called for it in August of 2023, I believe. And it's, I'm, I'm glad that it's been done. One of the things that, that, that the Charter Commission put in here is that there would be a Charter Commission mandatory at least every 10 years in the, in the, in the census year so that we don't get 20 years behind. But you can call it whatever you want to, but it's not a brand-new charter. And it doesn't, it doesn't affect what we've called the People's Petition in any way whatsoever. If that matter makes it through the court system and gets on a ballot, it will amend whatever the charter is at that time, whether it's the '05 charter, if this one fails, or it's this charter if it passes.
Okay.
And the, but to answer your question about the ordinance, the ordinance establishing the Charter Commission is, I believe, perfectly valid. I think even though some people resigned, I think it's, it's still perfectly valid.
So that's going to lead into my second question. Because the Charter Commission had to vote to unwind everything that was done when a member resigned, my father-in-law, who an ethics complaint was filed against me, probably for retribution because I support term limits. But my father-in-law, and I think he probably was improperly appointed, was on the commission and was in that initial ordinance. So is his inclusion in that ordinance a fatal flaw to the creation of the Charter Commission?
I don't, I don't believe so. And as, out of, out of an abundance of caution, after Mr. Freedley stepped down, and I thank him for his service, he was chairman, he, he really, he really brought a lot to the group. He did a fine job leading the group and I appreciate his service. After he left, because that could have been an issue, one of the things that the Charter Commission did, I guess if there was any advantage, at that point, very few substantive votes on proposed changes had been taken. But in order to address that issue, they, they made a motion and they properly rescinded any of those votes and then at a later date, they voted on them again. And ultimately, I mean, ultimately, the vote to send this, this proposed charter is what was the operative vote to send it to you. But any of the votes that involved Mr. Freedley, and it mainly was, I think, the thought process was not because he was a member of the Charter Commission, but because he was the chairman. And so that was a distinction. And so because he was the chairman, any votes that were taken at, when he was chairman were rescinded.
Okay. All right. So let's assume that this charter and the two other amendments, the term limits for mayor, term limits for city council, go to December 7th and they pass. The citizen's petition is not invalidated. It, once it works through the court process, even, even though this is a newer charter, if that's adopted, they still have an opportunity to amend that charter pending the legal outcome?
I read very carefully, once that was brought up, I've read the front page of the People's Petition and also the proposed ordinance on the back. And there's nothing in that that specifies that this only applies to the 2005 charter. It just says the city charter. So it would apply to whatever the city charter is at the time of that election.
Okay.
It does not, it's not locked in to that particular charter. It could amend this charter if it's passed.
Okay. And then, of course, we know that their petition and that lawsuit is set for review by the Second Circuit Court of Appeals in mid-November. Would we be better served by having everything on a ballot at one time, where you have a charter, you have term limits with retroactivity, you have term limits without retroactivity, and if neither one of them fail, you have the term limits that we have today, which are nine?
Mr. Ray, could I take that question?
Yeah, please.
That would be an absolute disaster for, for, for this reason. If you have two separate term limits initiatives or items, one with retroactivity and one without retroactivity, what happens if both of them pass? Then we're right back in the court system.
Right.
Well, I think that that would be a situation where the one that got the most votes would be adopted, if they were, if they were the same. But here's the problem. Here's the real problem. Mr. McGraw, can you put that back up? Can you put this back up with the propositions? So here's the problem. Councilman Smith, this is a great question.
I like asking you great questions.
Well, hopefully I give great answers. Sometimes I don't feel like I do, but I try. So, again, as I, as I said earlier, these, and by the way, this is what the Charter Commission has proposed. So just like with the People's Petition, I'll call it, or Cassie's petition, you're locked into the language. You're locked into this language. And this language says that those amendments, they amend either the existing charter or the charter that would be adopted in Proposition 1. The People's Petition, Cassie's petition, doesn't have that same language. And so you can't have something on the ballot, like you couldn't have those other matters on the same ballot because they only propose to amend the charter. This proposes to amend the existing charter or the charter that's adopted in Proposition 1. So they're incompatible. Another reason why I feel it's very important that these items get considered by the voters and either adopted or not adopted on December 7th. And then they're out of the way. And then if the Cassie petition is put on a ballot, then it'll amend whatever the charter is then. But it's still got to work through the court system and we don't control that.
Okay.
And I, I would be, as I mentioned the other day, the only docket left of the Second Circuit is that week of November the 18th, and that's during early voting for the December 7th election.
Right.
And so, I mean, there, there's not any way that the Cassie petition can be on the ballot because it's in the court. But this one can go and be done, up or down. And then the rest of them, the other one, can be in the future if the court system says put it on there, or it won't be if it does, if it says not. But this way, at least the people get to vote on a charter that's got a lot of good changes in it. And they also get a vote on term limits. And it may not be the same version of term limits that everybody wants, but I can promise you it's the one that has, is, is the, is the template of how it's been done in every other municipality and parish and the state of Louisiana, in the state of Louisiana. It makes it prospective. It doesn't make it retroactive.
And, and you're, you're the attorney for the, the city and it is your opinion that this charter and the propositions are legally sound?
Absolutely.
And that we won't find ourselves in any type of litigation?
Well, now, look, I can't promise you you won't find yourself in any kind of litigation because we find ourselves in it all the time. But I can tell you that it's legally sound and we have done it and don't take, you know, I'm not the dumbest lawyer on the planet, I'm not the smartest either, but, but I know how to hire people and I can tell you that we've had people that do this for a living look at it and, and it is, this is, this is on firm footing constitutionally.
Between dumbest and smartest, where would you say?
Probably closer to the dumber end. I can tell you why. Because like Mary Ward, I, I, Mr. Jacobson and I had a Tuesday meeting that went about like this and then later we got confirmed. But you know what? I know Mary Ward. She's a fighter. Charles Jacobson's a fighter. Richard Ray's a fighter. I love this job and I believe that this is the right thing to do. And so even if, you know, we get called names a lot or we get called the dumbest lawyer on the planet, I believe that this is the proper thing to do. And I would ask that you put it on the ballot for December 7th. Like I said, you got to put it on the ballot sometime. It doesn't get any better with age. I would put it on there December 7th. We talked about the cost the other day. It's the same. It's $14,400 to put it on December 7th. Would the election cost be less in the future? Yes. But.
Mr. President, I'm going to stop monopolizing his time and would like to hear the rest of the debate from the council and the public, but with your permission, I'd like to come back before we vote. back before we vote and make a statement, if that's okay.
You can. Are you ready to vote?
I'll open it up for the rest rest of the comment, but...
Phil, how many have we had?
We haven't had any on this.
Okay. None. Mr. Crockett, number one.
David Crockett, 653, Domain Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. In a nutshell, the problem is that regardless of what was said a minute ago, the people do not trust this body. They do not understand the shall and will. I keep pointing to people that I keep asking to vote because of what the charter says, but you don't do it. That's the problem. This resolution was being rushed to fight the people's petition, which has been unnecessarily delayed in the Second Court of Appeals at the taxpayers' expense. This resolution does not promote real term limits. Mr. Darby said it best. He supports term limits. Why? Because standard mortality tables show that he would die before being limited in office. He's fighting because he wants power for 42 years of his life. If this proposed proposition passes in December, Mr. Darby, Montgomery, Free, and Williams get another 12 years in office. Then they could skip one term and run for another 12 years. That's not what the people want. Mr. Darby could be in office until he lives to be 100, if that's the case. The charter resolution does not bring change to Bossier City. It invites more of this. Good old boy crony politics will continue in Bossier City. Secondly, Ms. Whitman and Ms. Moorehart were less than honest in their public comments in the last meeting.
How can you say that?
I'm going to explain that. Both praised themselves for eight months of work, which I appreciate, but here are the truths.
Back up from the mic a little bit so we can hear you, because you're like...
Well, I'm sorry, but your mic is too low for me.
Well, put, it bends up, look.
Okay. Want to give me more time, because you're eating into my time.
Oh, God.
These are the truths. Town hall meetings occurred by the public comment, or town hall meetings occurred, but the public comments about ethics reform and abusive nature of the city council and their powers were disregarded by the last nine charter commissioners. Four of the final charter members never attended any town hall meetings, so that was disingenuous. Mr. Darby's district has not been represented on the commission for one single meeting. That was an embarrassment. Mr. Williams' district was represented until the very last official meeting because it was repeated. It was not elite, it was not legal the way it was run. There was not ever a public meeting where any of the 120-plus changes that were openly just, they were not discussed individually with the four new charter commissioners. That's an embarrassment. We asked for that in those meetings. When you wonder why you had a cacophony in each of those meetings, it's because the people didn't feel like they were being represented. Seven months of work was changed in one meeting without comment on the merits of the changes, and I get more time.
I did expect that.
No offense to the current CAO, because she's does a great job, but this charter does not fix the abusive behavior of certain council meetings to block the mayor's responsibilities. The commissioners attempted to violate quorum appointments, and this process was full of open meeting violations.
Thank you.
I think this should be voted down. I don't think this should ever be approved, because I think there are too many violations. But thank you for your ability, for giving me the opportunity to comment.
Vicki Whitman, 4308 Benton Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. Mr. Smith, when I called you to ask you about this, I wish you would have warned me.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. I, well, I am hoping that you'll go ahead and vote to send us and put it on a December ballot so we can get this behind us. There was never an effort by anyone on this commission to stop what they're doing with the petition. I am not a term limits person. I personally don't like term limits. I think they take away my right to vote. But I was willing to compromise because I heard the people from the town halls that we went to, and that is why I went ahead and I voted for the term limits the way it is written, because we know it is valid, we know it is legal, we know it's been trusted and tested. Now, it also gives a chance of doing it like this on different ballots, items, for people like me who do not like term limits, and there are more out there, whether they believe it or not, they have a chance to vote no. It gives everyone a chance to vote yes or no. If the petition comes and it takes over, you know what? Good for them. They work hard, and I acknowledge the hard work that you've done, just as we have done hard work, and I would appreciate it if we had a little bit more support from the people that we have served. But also, I would like to say that in the last meeting that we had, it was said that I was under an ethics violation and that I was being investigated, and that actually it was going to be determined this month. So I have not received any postal service mail, email, text message, or smoke signal from Baton Rouge saying that I'm under investigation. I received zero. So I called the Louisiana Board of Ethics yesterday, 1018, it's on my phone, you don't need a Freedom of Information Act, I'll give it to you, and I spoke to the Ethics Board. There is nothing open on me, never has been. So I explained to the lady, well, that's what I've been told, so she gave me, she forwarded my call to an attorney there at the Ethics Board. She, too, looked up everything, could find nothing on me. And so I said, well, she said, you would have been notified. And I said, well, I haven't been. That's what I would have thought. So I said, well, I was told that it was going to happen this month. Well, not only is there no open case on me, they're not even meeting this month. And also, by the way, they're said that I have a $500 fine. I have been charged with no fines. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman.
Thank you, Vicki. Really, the first question I have is, or go through you, Mr. President, but...
Just take your name and address.
I'm sorry, Ruth Johnston Tillman, Bossier City, 7111. And it's really to Mr. Ray, because it's something that happened, but I'll address it to you. I'd like to know from Mr. Ray, you stated today that, okay, we're talking about Cassie's petition now, that, okay, it's in the Second Circuit, it's going to come back mid-November, and if the council loses again, if you want to look at it, or if the people's position petition wins, then then that's it. But Mr. Ray made the comment to me personally after I spoke at a Charter Commission that the council was likely to appeal it all the way to the Louisiana Supreme Court. So in the timeline that's been given today, that certainly is not addressed, and so I wanted to ask if that could be done. With your permission, Mr. President.
Well, yes, and Ms. Johnson and Mr. President, I'd like to address, I've, I, Mr. Jacobson and I are not involved in any way in the litigation. I call it maybe Cassie's petition, because I know Cassie, and I respect the work that she's done, but the litigation that she initiated is Cassie Rogers versus the city of Bossier City. So Cassie's name, she's the named plaintiff, that's the way I refer to it. But ma'am, I've never told you anything about what the council would do or not do in litigation. Respectfully, that's not true. I I don't know what would happen. I probably said, when you get into the court system, I've handled a lot of big cases. I just had one, I had my first one that went to the United States Supreme Court, and I'm proud of it. We had a local judge that said a motion, he granted a motion. It went to the Second Circuit. The Second Circuit said our local judge was wrong. Then it went to the Supreme Court, and the Louisiana Supreme Court said our local judge was right. Then it went to the United States Supreme Court, and last week, the United States Supreme Court said our local judge was right. That's that's as far as it can go. I've never had one go that high, but I've had a lot be at the District Court, the Court of Appeal, and the Supreme Court, and it takes time. If I said that, that's why I said that, because if they, if there's if there's a writ taken even after the Second Circuit rules, no matter who likes it or doesn't like it, it may take more time. That's why the Cassie petition, the people's petition, whatever you want to call it, has no chance to be on the December 7th ballot because it's in the court system.
The the comment that you made specifically and the context was, because I was questioning the process, just like you just said, and you said, the council was likely, exact quote. I would not lie about that, and I didn't misremember that either, Mr. Ray.
Is that, are you saying that's in one of the meetings that's that's livestreamed or that was recorded?
I don't know if it was recorded, because as I was leaving, it was just, you had given the explanation that you just gave, and you said, you know, this council would likely or was likely...
That's not true.
It is true. And hopefully, since you were sitting to the side, hopefully that would have been caught, and you can look at what was said.
I would ask you to go on.
I resent that a city attorney has just called me a liar in front of the council. I do.
Ms. Johnson, do you have anything else?
I do, actually.
Okay.
In all the talk about the petition and whatnot, the people's petition, I call it, Judge Parker Self, this document went before him, there were no indications from him that indicated that there is any, it may not be what you prefer, but it's what the people prefer, and there's never, the legal veracity of the document has not been tested. Our question, and I think even Katie Bell, who did the initial review, did not find a question, a legal question with the document. Is that right, Mr. Jacobson? Am I remembering that correctly?
Katie Bell gave an opinion on the first petition effort, and she addressed several concerns. But again, this, as Mr. Ray has correctly stated, the term limits coalition effort has is attempting to do something that's never been done at any level of government in the state of Louisiana. You're not trying to reinvent the wheel, you're trying to replace the wheel with something. And when you get into that process, when you make that attempt, you're going to have people who who are going to be strongly for it, they're going to be strongly against it. That's why the litigation ensued. And once you get into that litigation process, it's time-consuming and it's costly. And again, we represent the city of Bossier, that's both the mayor and the city council. There were strong feelings by different, by the mayor and several councilmen and other councilmen. Therefore, we had a conflict. We couldn't represent some, you know, our clients against each other. You're just not allowed to do that as a lawyer. And so the process of litigation is costly, it's time-consuming, and it's expensive. And however...
But the First Amendment does give the people, in a democratic process, the ability to petition their government.
Katie Bell gave several opinions. I gave several opinions. I've said it before. You put four lawyers in a room, you're going to come out with five different opinions. I, that's, you know, Katie Bell might be right, she might be wrong. Never been addressed before. There's a reason it's never been addressed before, because it's never been done this way before because of these potential problems. If, and therefore, it was chosen to be done this way, and therefore, that's, and the problems ensued.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, if that was the term limits coalition's choice, I don't control that, the council doesn't control that, the mayor doesn't control that.
But the point remains, in the attorneys that we've been before with with Cassie's petition, there's never been those persons who were judging the document that said, oh, there's a big legal problem with this, which is what y'all always allude to, but it's never been documented outside of your comments.
There's, there, again, I gave no opinion as to the second term limit petition, other than the form of the petition did not contain the same fatal flaws that the first petition. The problems now, or the issues now, or the allegations now, to be decided upon by the Second Circuit and maybe the Louisiana Supreme Court, have to do with the language and the way that it was drafted. So, and then you haven't even gotten to the constitutionality of that.
Yeah.
Because no judge or court's going to rule on that until it gets on a ballot and passes. Then that becomes ripe for determination. So you're going to have subsequent litigation, if it if it gets on a ballot and if it passes, then you're going to have more litigation.
That's your opinion.
If the if the council or members of the council or any member of the electorate, any citizen of Bossier City wishes to pursue that, but I don't control that, neither does Mr. Ray.
Yeah. But going back to the issue, and we'll deal with my...
I don't know what the issue is. I'm sorry.
Well, the issue is, everyone always talks about, you know, that this has never been done, it's new, it's novel. The people that petitioned you, that have the petition, are the people of Bossier City. To me, those things don't matter, because that is the version, I'm answering the question, that's the version that the people wanted. And let me just close by saying, Mr. Ray still did not address what that does to the timeline if indeed it comes back, you all lose and decide to waste even more taxpayer dollars and take it on to the Supreme Court. What does that do to the timeline, and what does that do to the petition? And then we'll deal later with the complaint that will be coming about coming before this council, addressing the council, as is my right to do, and being called a liar in front of the commission, and the bullying that takes place before this commission when people come to speak to you. It's unacceptable.
Thank you.
Lee Jeter Senior, 400 Columbia Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. Mr. Mayor, Council, President, Council. I think what gets lost in all of this is the one word, retroactivity. What we're proposing before this body is a amended city charter that has some major and what we believe substantive changes to the charter. Does it fix everything? Nope. You can't fix everything in one setting. But we believe it has made progress that's going to ensure that our city becomes a better city and that we've got the law in place to make that happen. I don't think our proposition for term limits for the mayor and the city council, in my opinion, my humble opinion, is going to interfere with the people's petition, and therefore, I would ask you to move it forward for, to the bond commission to allow the vote of the people. And the reason I feel that way is because the retroactivity portion of the citizen petition would mean that certain individuals could not run for reelection. However, qualification for the mayor's and the city council election begins in January of this year. That issue may not be resolved. After people petition wins, even after this goes to vote, after it passes by the people, then the people's petition still goes into effect. The retroactivity would not be back four years ago, it would be based upon the current council as they would be elected. That's the issue. That is an uncharted territory that no one knows about, and we, even as we are in discussion on the Charter Commission, we also took the time to review the legalities of any petitions that may have been submitted with retroactivity in it, and whether retroactivity was even legal. But we were adamant that the people wanted term limits in some form or fashion. So we compromised, and we put a document together, not only that, put a city charter with some revisions, some major revisions to the charter to go before the people, but also with an opportunity for people to vote on term limits for the mayor and city council as we have proposed, based upon listening to the dialogue of the people. And then should the people petition win, it will still modify that. It will have no effect on what's going to happen at qualification for mayor and city council in January and the election that would take place in March if it's still tied up in litigation. But we need to have a new... But we need to have a new amended city charter to go with the new administration, whoever's elected, so that we can begin to move forward. I would ask for your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jeter.
Cassie Rogers, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7/11/12. I think, you know, I heard Ms. Whitman say, shame on you, Chris, but Mr. Maggio is the one who appointed her, so I would have hoped that he would have answered all of her questions, so I'm sorry about that, because it's been clear from the beginning of time, from this charter commission, that they didn't even know what they were doing. I asked them on several occasions to read Chapter 21, so they can find out what they're supposed to do. Charter commission is to be erected, put together, whatever you want to say, called on, to settle the disagreements between the mayor and the city council. That didn't happen. The only thing that has happened, that, first of all, you guys didn't even give them a list, there were two people, maybe three, three, that gave what their issue was with the city charter to the commission, and then months and months and months later, some list randomly appeared all of the sudden. And I'm talking about months later, after the town halls, after the first meetings, after what was referred to as hell started. No one knew what they were doing. Yes, what we're doing is uncharted territory, and I appreciate you calling it Cassie's petition, but it is the people's petition. I'd rather it be referred to that way, because I'm just a face of the 6,000 people that signed both of them. But you can't even explain to your own person that you elected to be on the commission, what the commission is for? No wonder they had no clue what they were supposed to be doing. No wonder it was ran like a clown show, it was. You haven't settled the disputes between the mayor and the city council. Therefore, what they have done is not the job they were supposed to do. Put it all through, put the, if you can, for whatever reason, so we can squash all this litigation or whatever, who knows where it's going to go from our side or your side? But I will tell you, as a contract person, as someone who signs contracts often, I signed a couple, including my life away for many, many years. Current date, that's written in the amendments to the current charter, that petition was certified in July of 2024, or 2023, I'm sorry, four, 2024. The current petition started after that, I mean, the current charter started after that. So, that's also going to be in litigation if the people's petition ever really gets through. When I play, I play to win. So, whether we take care of this with the amendments to the charter, or we take care of it at the vote in March, none of you will be sitting here anymore.
Cassie, can I, can I say something? And listen, I'm not trying to be argumentative, you know, during the charter commission, you hear on the crazy, crazy Duke Show that we're talking to our, our people that we put on there to tell them what to do. That's one reason I never had a conversation, and I'm not going to make a list and tell them what they need to do. I never had a conversation, never spoke one word to the person I appointed. I didn't want to get involved in all that crap, okay? That's their job to do it, and I think they did a good job.
Okay, let me ask you one question.
Yes, ma'am.
And that wasn't actually meant for you when I said that comment, so if you took it that way.
No, I just wanted to know.
Okay, I understand, but the first, there should have been a conversation. When someone says, "I would like to appoint you to a very prominent place in our city's government to help us resolve some issues that we have, here's why, here's what your responsibility is going to be, and if not, at least ask them to read the chapter that governs the body that they're going to be on." Because likely, some of these members right here in this front row, still to this very moment, don't understand why they were appointed and what they were supposed to do.
Why do you think that, though?
Because it says it in our charter.
That they don't understand what they're supposed to do?
Did they, did they resolve the disputes between the mayor and the city council?
Well, that's probably kind of, I mean, we don't have that many disputes, but.
Right, well, there's a ton, wow, there's not that many.
How can they resolve that, though?
This, because that was, that's the job of the commission.
And again, I'm just.
That's the job of the commission, but someone, when someone says, "I'm sorry, I don't understand what my responsibilities are going to be," you could have that conversation with them. You're supposed to help resolve the issues that we have going on between the mayor and the city council. I've said that a thousand times in those meetings. Y'all could have said that to your people. There was like maybe three people that understood that, and they got ran off in the first week.
You know, we do have disputes with the mayor, he has disputes with us.
Right, that's what a charter commission is designed to do.
We did go up in his office and talk to him.
Okay.
We've been friends for over 20 years, and hopefully.
I'm not talking about disputes, hey, I like, I like this fishing pole, you like that fishing pole, I'm not talking about that. What I'm, the charter commission is designed, and solely, it's, it's, what do you call it, responsibility is to resolve the things that the charter says that the mayor and the city council disagree on, so that the people, there's supposed to be a representative of the people, so that the people work out the best in all the scenario. People haven't worked out at all. The only people that have worked out is the IT department, which is great, probably firing police at some point, that's great, but the version of term limits, that's not for the people, that's for y'all. Y'all didn't do anything, nothing this charter commission did benefits the people of this city. Nothing that we asked for was put in here, maybe one or two little, small things. The town halls were pointless, absolutely pointless. They were pointless. All of our comments were pointless. Whether y'all talked to them or not, they knew who they were working for.
Oh, they weren't working for me.
Well, if they weren't, they sure acted like it, but that's okay, you know what? They really did a lot of work, they really did. And it's a shame that I'm even having to stand up here and say anything, but the first conversation that should have been had is, why do I, why am I doing this? What are my responsibilities? What am I supposed to be doing? And I'm sorry if I was one of you and one of someone else that was appointed that disagrees with me on a big issue asks me what I'm supposed to be doing, I would say, I don't know what you're supposed to be doing, you need to ask the guy who appointed you.
Richard, can I, can you mind if I address, Richard, while you're talking?
What Cassie's alluding to, and we've discussed it in the meetings, is section, the current charter, Section 21.02, subsection four, and in the current charter, Section 21.02 in the current charter has to do with the appointment of a charter commission. And subsection four says, "The charter review commission will be presented a draft of suggested charter changes jointly drafted by the mayor and city council members. The draft of suggested changes shall represent a coordinated recommendation of the mayor and city council, but will indicate, if applicable, areas of disagreement. The commission shall develop proposed changes as soon as feasible, but no later than 18 months after being formed."
So, let me say this to her, so, Richard did ask for our comments, they were submitted to Richard, which then he took it, I guess, to the charter commission.
Yes, as I've explained, we had many meetings, many meetings with the mayor.
Exactly.
We had at least one meeting, if not multiple meetings, Mr. Jacobs and I, with all seven council members. All seven council members provided extensive proposed changes, as did the mayor.
Does it say how many day, within how many days?
Not in the old one, but that's in the proposal, I'll get to that. But that was one of the issues. We started our meetings in January, the town halls, I believe, were in March. Between January and March, we had a series of meetings, took a lot of time, every council member went through the charter, every council member and the mayor provided proposed changes. In the very first draft that was presented to the charter review commission, that was probably in March, it's, it had all of these changes in little bubbles, and each one of them, if there were an area of disagreement, if one council member disagreed with another council member or the mayor, it said areas of disagreement. And what the charter says is, when you establish a charter review commission, they shouldn't just throw these citizens out into the wild and say, here's a charter, fix it. They're supposed to give proposed changes, and they did, and then they're supposed to note areas of disagreement, and we did. And so, a lot of work went into that, and it was before town halls, it was before a lot of the meetings, and then the charter review commission took those proposed changes from the mayor, there wasn't just one or two changes from the mayor, there were, I would submit it was probably 150 total. And then, the charter commission, over the next eight or 10 months, whittled those down, some of them they accepted, some of them they didn't. But that doesn't mean that the charter commission's job is to resolve disputes between the mayor and the council. What this section says is that, at the beginning of the process, the council and the mayor are supposed to give the charter commission a good start and give their proposed changes, and they did. I was there, these people were there.
The ordinance was established December 8th or 9th?
No, the ordinance was effective December 22nd.
Okay, December 22nd, no, no, no.
And the first meeting was like January the 16th.
No, the proposed changes were given, were first discussed and voted on in May?
Well, no, 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 ma'am, that's not true.
The May 10th?
Well, that might have been the first vote, they were discussed in every meeting. They were provided to the, here's.
Again, we're all confused on what we're supposed to do.
But Cassie, you're providing misinformation, frankly. The charter commission was effective in December, December 22nd, their first meeting was in January. In February, the council and the mayor provided all their proposed changes. In March, all of those proposed changes were given in a paper document to all the council, all the charter commission members, and then they began the process, and there were town halls. That's the timeline. You can go back and watch every one of those meetings, all of that.
I was at all of them, just about.
Well, I disagree with that, but I was at all of them except for April the 8th, because I was chasing the.
I said just about.
I was chasing the eclipse with my family. I was at every single meeting other than that, every single town hall, there's hundreds of hours into this, and this document does not say that the charter commission is supposed to resolve disputes. All that part says is that, at the beginning, there's supposed to be a document that has proposed changes, and they did that.
And I, I mean, that's his opinion, but from December 22nd till May 10th, I don't, I think that's a lot of time and a lot of wasted time for the citizens, the hundreds of citizens that participated in those town hall meetings that got no say. So, it is what it is. The only three people that put together any kind of document before May was the mayor, Chris, and Brian.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Cassie.
Mr. President, I've got a question real quick, if I may, before, is that okay, Ms. Whitman, or do you want? Huh? Oh, um, when we're, since we're talking about the appointment of the charter review commission, under Section 22.02, Number 3, just making sure we're all legal here, all commissioners, this, the old, before this was fixed, must be approved by ordinance or by simple majority vote of city council members. If a city council member or mayor's nominee is not approved, the city council member or mayor shall seek another nominee for the city council consideration. So, my question is, we had three or four original commission members that resigned.
Quit.
Quit. Resigned or quit, that's all the same thing to me.
Yes, Councilman Hammond.
Should they have come back, the new members of the charter commission, should they have been approved by this council?
No, and here's why. The charter says that if the council is going to launch a charter commission, then the nine members of it, one appointed by each member of the council and two by the mayor, have to be approved by ordinance. They were. Councilman Darby started the process last August, and he announced that in November of 2023, he would ask for a charter commission, he did. It was on two meetings with the names, it was approved, and then with that 17 or 18-day holdover that we've tried to address in the new proposed charter, it was effective December 22nd. What you're alluding to is when there's vacancies, and there's nothing in the existing charter, and there's frankly, nothing in the new proposed charter that addresses vacancies. But Louisiana Revised Statute 33:1395.1 does address vacancies on a charter commission, and it says that vacancies on a charter commission shall be filled by the members of the charter commission. And so, that's how they were filled.
Okay, that answers my question.
There's nothing in the charter or in the law that says, or in our charter, how to fill vacancies. The original nine members were properly appointed by ordinance.
Yeah, no, I understand that, just my question was, should the vacancies that were filled been confirmed by us, was my question.
There's, the charter is silent on that, Louisiana law is clear that vacancies on a charter commission must be filled by the charter commission, and they were.
Y'all think that that's something that may need to be put in here, or just go off of the state statute?
Well, you may have to catch that one next time, because this one's done, I mean, they're.
I don't know if we want to do this again.
You and me. But I'm not scared, it's hard work, and it's hard work serving people, but, you know, we're trying to do what's right, so.
Can I just say one more quick comment?
No.
One more quick comment. I believe one of the questions is that we asked what you asked in one of the meetings. I think the controlling provision is what it says in the charter. Who would be, what would happen if they appointed somebody else who had a legal issue? You know, they had the right to appoint somebody, I think that you could say that the controlling provision is the charter, and that they may, maybe they could have nominated somebody to go before the city council, and the city council approved it. That's not the city council telling them how to do the charter commission, but I interpreted it exactly the way you probably read it when you said. I think that would be the controlling provision, and I think that's something else that could be argued in court. So, we argued in the meetings that they should come before you, because it wasn't, I think it's pretty clear, because I think words matter. And I thought, Richard and I talked about it a couple of times, and I appreciate the dialogues I had with Richard, I think he was very patient with the public, but I don't think he's always right.
He's not.
I know, thank you.
All right, so we got two more speakers against, and one more for.
Just one more speaker against, we've already had.
One more speaker against and one for.
We've already had three.
Mr. Marriott, you're the lucky one of either one you're going to do.
I didn't say if I was for or against.
Okay, what are you then?
You can decide at the end of my comments. West Marriott 211, Shadow Ridge Drive. I'm going to make this as clear as I possibly can, because there's been a lot of debate, there's been a lot of opinions presented as fact, but we all need to go back and look at the charter, which dictates your actions today. You have the Louisiana Constitution, correction, you have the United States Constitution, you have the Louisiana Constitution, you have the Revised Statute of the State of Louisiana, you have some Bossier Parents ordinances that may or may not apply outside of the city limits, and then you have the Home Rule Charter and the ordinances of Bossier City in that order. So, you can take away, but you can't add to, so we've heard that in the military many times. The amendments as presented to you are illegal if you look at the charter that you have in front of you right now, our current charter. 2102 says, "Each amendment, however proposed, may include more than one section of the charter, provided that it relates to a single subject that must be clearly expressed in the title." Amendment number one is an entire amendment, amended and restated petition. This is not one subject. You cannot pass an omnibus law in Louisiana, and you cannot pass an omnibus charter. You must have one topic per amendment that you send to the voters. If you want to change he, she, to they in every portion of the charter, that's amendment number one. If you want to change how the city does something else, that's amendment number two. Your current charter says, "Each amendment shall be limited to a single topic." This is a fatal flaw, just like year of birth was a fatal flaw for the first petition. You cannot vote yes to send an amended and restated petition without the imminent threat of litigation, because the current charter restricts you from doing so. Additionally, this meeting violates the open meetings law by 60 seconds. And you may think that that's just a ridiculous thing to say, but if I rob you at gunpoint for a dollar, or I rob you at gunpoint for $10,000, it's still a crime, and I'm still getting locked up. The Louisiana open meetings law requires no less than 24 hours' notice for any amendment or any change to the agenda. This agenda was posted at 3:36 PM, it was emailed out at 3:36 PM, and if you look at the surveillance video for the front door, it was posted on the wall of this building after that. The meeting was scheduled to begin at 3:35. I'm not a mathematician, 24 hours and 59 minutes is mathematically less than 24 hours. So, this meeting violates the open meetings law, and the enforcement provision of 4225 in the Louisiana Revised Statute says, if you violate the open meetings law, the meeting is invalidated. What Mr. Ray has attempted to do is cram an enormous amount of information and say, we got to get this done by Monday, it's got to be done by Monday, and not. And none of you are educated enough on the charter or the proposed amendments to say this is a legal thing to do. Because if you reviewed your own charter right now as it exists, you would come to the same conclusion. And I thank you for extending Cassie Rogers the courtesy of speaking for thirteen minutes. I'm sure under the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution, you allow me to do the same. If you review the current charter.
We've already gone too many speakers, let me ask you, whose clock, whose watch did you use? Because if I'm not mistaken, and Phyllis, I'm not dragging you into it, when was that thing, that thing posted? I think we talked about that. And, and what else are you talking about?
Sure, I subscribe to the agenda notifications, I received one for a meeting at three o'clock that was sent out at two forty-four PM. I then received one, I received one at three-thirty for a meeting scheduled at three-thirty, and then I received one at three-thirty-six for a meeting scheduled at three-thirty-five. I checked the Agenda Center, that was posted online, it had the exact same timestamp of three-thirty-six for a three-thirty-five meeting. And I've got a picture on my phone of a person standing in front of this building at the appropriate time to determine when that was posted. So if you want to continue and be wrong by one minute, you're one minute, you were so close to ramrodding this illegal agenda down the throats of the people of Bojor City, but you weren't quick enough. This isn't a legal meeting.
And we let you talk at a legal meeting, so are you legal?
Well, I, I would contend that if the meeting is illegal, then you don't have the authority to stop me from talking. So this is, the open meeting law protects the process as much as it protects the people of Louisiana.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
We didn't start the meeting until, well, I think it was like three forty-five.
Look at the scheduled time.
Nonsense, Mr. President.
That's a nonsense argument you can make in court. It is, like I said, it opens you up to the threat of imminent litigation, but that's not the fatal flaw. The fatal flaw is your current charter says, "Each amendment must be limited to one issue." We have the same law for any revised statute in Louisiana. If you want to propose an amendment, it's gotta be limited to one change. This is not one change, an independent study said it's a hundred and sixty changes.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, we're gonna, hey, we're gonna let you be the last speaker, if that's okay?
Wow, I enjoyed, and I, to dovetail on what Mr. Marriott said very passionately and very incorrectly. The current charter that we're acting under, the two thousand five charter, was adopted as an omnibus charter with a lot of changes. It's perfectly legal to do so in Louisiana. In fact, the charter that he touts was adopted in that very manner. So the fact that he tries to say that you're violating your own charter, you're, you would be violating a charter that was adopted in the exact same way.
Marriott, you've had your chance, okay?
It was adopted the exact same way in two thousand five. It was put before the voters in the exact same way in two thousand four, and it failed. It was an amended and restated charter, it's perfectly legal. We've had discussions with outside counsel, with, with bond commission counsel, it's perfectly legal under Louisiana law, it's perfectly permissible under this charter. The wording was exactly the same pre-two thousand five, when the two thousand five charter was adopted as an amended and restated charter. It's perfectly valid. Although he says things passionately, just like, Mr. Hammond is right, I'm not always right, okay? I'm, I'm not, he's not either. I'm your lawyer, he's not.
Let me say this one thing, Richard, just let me say this to you and him. You're the last person gonna speak today, we're fixing to adjourn this meeting, if he would like to stay and talk to you, or you would like to not stay and talk to him, that's up to y'all. We've been here, we've kept these people here, everybody had a chance to speak.
Well, I can't speak to him because he's a represented party in a, in a lawsuit against the city. He has a lawyer, I'll speak with his lawyer.
Counsel, does anybody on the council, mayor, you have anything to say?
Mr. President, if I could be afforded just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Make a brief comment, okay? And so I just, I want to take a moment and just address this vote and share my position, because that's been brought into question here recently. I'm a strong believer in the democratic principles that define this country. I hold firm to the idea that government should be of the people, by the people, and for the people. The citizens of Bojor City rightfully chose to exercise their voice through the rights granted to them by our city charter when they did their petition. Section five point oh-one of the charter clearly states that the city council, and I quote, "Shall call an election to be held within ninety days thereafter." The word "shall" here is crucial, and it's the center focus of frankly Ms. Rogers' ongoing lawsuit. Similarly, when it comes to the recommendations of the charter commission, and this is important, we as a city council do not, are not given the authority to vet and determine what is legal and what is not legal, that is up to an attorney's. Section twenty-one point oh-four of the city charter explicitly states what this council's role is. And that is that the city council, and I'm quoting, "Shall submit any amendment as recommended by the Charter Review Commission to the electors of the city of Bojor City." Again, our charter has the directive "shall." Even a speaker at the beginning of this meeting said, and I quoting, "The city charter is like your constitution, and you must follow it." I agree. That's why on the votes for the term limits petition, I voted in the affirmative to move it forward, because it was the legal and the right thing to do. Ms. Rogers and the Term Limit Coalition filed a suit against this city and each of us individually, because they believe, and I believe with them, that we violated the charter by not honoring the clear mandate of sending it to the petitioners. Or sending it to the voters. And this was upheld by a judge at the twenty-sixth judicial court. While I deeply respect the petitioners and understand their frustration, I understand you feel like your hard work is being sidelined and your voices are not being heard. I cannot in good conscience knowingly violate the city charter or the oath of office that I took on July first of twenty-twenty-one by voting no on this. I just can't do it. This decision has weighed heavily on me, and I don't take it lightly. I wish the circumstances were different, I wish that this council would have pushed the petition to the voters, because it was the right thing to do. I'm disappointed that that hasn't happened, and that the petitioners have not been given the same consideration as the recommendations of the charter commission. And that is a travesty, and we should all be ashamed of sitting up here that we gave the charter commission more consideration. However, from the moment I launched a campaign to sit in this chair, I promised that I would stand by principles and uphold the highest standards of integrity. And by voting for this charter commission to move forward, I am living up to that, and I am demonstrating that sometimes the right decision is not always the most popular decision. Right is right, wrong is wrong. And it was wrong by this council to not put the petition toward the voters. And it would also be wrong if any of us voted against this, because the charter is clear, we shall do this. You can come up with as many arguments as you want, the charter is clear in what my role is, I shall do it. And I cannot knowingly violate the oath of office that I took. I campaigned on term limits, I campaigned on revising the city charter. And I'll remind everybody that was in the room at Silver Star when we had a very robust debate on this during the campaigns of twenty-twenty-one, I was told this was impossible and would never happen. But here we are, on December seventh, the citizens of Bojor City will have an opportunity to vote on a charter, and will have an opportunity to vote on term limits. Are these the term limits that the people petitioned for? No, it's not. But it's a step in the right direction, and it's progress to getting there. And quite frankly, they may be different, but they're still term limits, and they're better than the term limits we have today. So I sincerely hope that once the legal process concludes, the citizens will have the opportunity to vote on their vision of term limits. But today, I will vote not to silence anyone and to respect the rule of law and the office I swore to uphold. Thank you.
Counsel, anybody else got anything to say? Phyllis, we need to vote on that. Yes, ma'am.
Chris, I appreciate what you said, I appreciate all of you. And I do know who set me on here, Cassie, it was my councilman, Vince Maggio. But what you don't know, and you assume, like so many of you assume things about me, that you don't know me, when Vince Maggio asked me to do this, I said, "I will do it if there is not a conflict between this and the marshal's office." He told me.
Ms. Whitman.
That lady right there.
Ms. Whitman?
Ms. Whitman, Ms. Whitman.
So, I do know who set me, and when Vince asked me to do this, what I asked was, is there gonna be a conflict? Because if there's a conflict between me and the marshal's office, I would not do it. He honestly told me, "I do not know, but Chris Smith is really wanting this and starting it up, why don't you call him?" And I did. I called Chris, I said, "Chris, could you explain to me what this is that you want me to do?" He simply said, "The charter is old, it needs revising, we would like for y'all to look at the charter and make suggestions for a new one." Chris, am I right?
Yep.
And I, and he was the one who pushed me, not pushed me, he kind of conferred to me that I should do this and talked me into it. And so, my comments, thank you, Chris, was, "Thank you for talking me into doing this, Chris." So that, that's, that is how, and Mr. Maggio has never told me how to vote. He has simply said, "I trust you, vote your heart," and that's what I have done. And, so anyway, thank you for letting me clear that up.
Um, this, this, certainly. Read what you said. If they go to Louisiana revised statute forty-two, colon, two, point two, they can read what it says, and you are definitely legal. Do you even know the marshal?
Well, as a matter of fact, when I got through with the ethics lady, she told me there was no violation, that there was no meeting this month. I explained to her my situation, who I was married to, what his position was, what my position was on. And could you tell me, is there an ethics violation? Because if there is, I will resign, I'm not gonna do anything, and I, unethically. And she told me, "No, ma'am, there's no reason why you should not be on that." And if, a matter of fact, at one brief moment, Mr. Jeter had said something about the marshal's office that he wanted to change. What'd I tell you out there, Lee? I said, "Lee, if you vote on anything with the marshal's office, I will have to recuse myself." And he said, "And that is what I would expect you to do." And never once did we discuss the marshal's office, because simply, he's not in the charter. We did not address anything that y'all do budgetary or about ordinances, because that was not our job. Even though there were some things we would like to have changed, we couldn't, we never addressed it. The marshal's office never came into conversation, because he's not in, he doesn't have a chapter in the charter.
Exactly, exactly.
And so, anyway, I think that just need to be cleared up. And Chris, I still thank you, and Vince, you know, I thank you every day for this, but anyway.
Thank you for doing it, Dick.
I do thank you, mayor, thank you, gentlemen. And I hope that the people, if you vote for term limits or you don't vote for term limits, you look at the charter, because they are desperately needed changes, and it, it did need changing. And so I hope that you look at it and, you know, you'll vote your heart. We didn't make laws, we just suggested, it will be up for the, up to the citizens to vote up or down on it. But anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Cassie, did you want to talk to me after the meeting, or right now, or what? Can we make it quick?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
In that comment to Mr. Maggio and Mr. Smith, I didn't allude to the fact that I thought that you're, I have said that before, but I did not allude to the fact that I thought that your position on the commission was invalid. I was just simply saying that not, neither Mr. Maggio, and if I was Chris, I wouldn't have told you what to do either, except exactly what you're supposed to do. I wouldn't have said, hey, this is really what you're, what we're here for. I would have let you make your mistakes on your own, so that the person who elected you looks like a crazy person too. So, I didn't, no, I didn't say that. I'm sorry, I just want you to know that I had, I had nothing to, I have nothing to do with ethical violations as of today. Now tomorrow, that may need to change, but not today.
All right, Cass, we got one more vote, Cass, okay? Please, Cass, your vote. Please, 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 please.
Mr. Darby, you can.
Motion carries.
So there it goes, okay.
Motion passed.
Counsel, do we have any announcements?